Call this meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda is to say the pledge. Brandon, will you lead us in the pledge?
You may.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is our consent agenda. It's the approval of the regular meeting minutes from February 18th, 2021. Approval of the financial summary fund balances. Authorization and payment of bills, and we need to pull Larry Vincent out of that. Monthly addition to substitute teacher and bus driver list. And approval of the proposed agenda. Do we have a motion? Dan makes the motion. Do we have a second? Mark seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Six zero. Our next item is to recognize our visitors. Looks like we've got quite a few tonight, and we thank you for coming. It's always nice to see people that are interested. Next is our monthly board report. Do we have?
We approve of Larry's payment.
Oh, we forgot about that. How does that work?
I'll let you tell that to people.
I forgot about that. Need a motion to pay Larry Vincent.
Good catch.
Brandon makes the motion. Do we have a second? Troy, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Five and one up staying. Now we can do the voting for it. Mr. Dalton.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for about March. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the effort to provide a more coordinated approach to early childhood care and education in Missouri. Missouri's new Office of Childhood will consolidate early childhood-related programs in various state agencies into a single office within the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Chief of Early Learning Pam Thomas tells us the new office will allow for a whole-child approach to serving children and families.
We know that we need children to be safe and feel safe, and they need to be healthy and fed and feel well, have a good well-being in order for them to learn. So the great thing about this new office is bringing that whole-child approach to the way that children learn and getting them ready for school.
Thomas adds the Office of Childhood will play a role in supporting the availability of early childhood education programs in the state.
I think it also helps provide a way for us to promote and elevate early childhood in places that we're not doing that right now, but it also respects that it's all of our programs are voluntary. So I think it really comes to that perspective of if families have a need and they need something, how can we provide that for them, very family-centric? And sometimes what you find is we have more program-centric situations where this is the program that's available, but it may not meet the family's needs. And so we need to be more family-centric and looking at those voluntary opportunities for families to access if that's what they need.
Thomas says work is underway to move programs within the Department of Social Services and the Department of Health and Senior Services into the Office of Childhood, along with programs currently in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The goal is to ensure children throughout the state have access to more consistent and quality programs and services. The new Office of Childhood will be in place by August 28th. By the way, MSBA's Future Builders Foundation is now accepting applications for the 2021 Early Childhood Education Program of the Year awards. There will be three awards for exemplary early childhood education programs based on school district size. Applications will be judged by the Future Builders Board of Directors in April. The deadline for submitting an application is March 31st. MSBA continues to be concerned about several issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that would be harmful to our public schools. They include the expansion of charter schools without adequate accountability, the creation of virtual charter schools, and tax credit voucher programs, sometimes called empowerment scholarship accounts, that would funnel public dollars to private schools that are not accountable to taxpayers. There are also bills under consideration that would create a system of open enrollment among school districts, allowing students in one district to attend school in another district free of charge. The resident district would then be required to pay the non-resident district the per pupil local effort, and the non-resident district can count the student as a resident for the purpose of state and federal aid. Jefferson City School Board member Ken Enlow testified at a recent legislative hearing. He's concerned taxpayers from one school district could end up financially subsidizing another school district.
We all know district levies are passed by local taxpayers with the expectation that those funds and those dollars are going to be used locally in that district, and so we obviously have a concern about any legislation that would cause that to be messed with. To me, it's the equivalent of taking the state taxes that I pay to Missouri and then someone telling you as the legislature to send those dollars to Illinois and let them decide how they're used, and I don't think that's a great idea.
As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, our Twitter feed with up-to-the-minute developments, through critical issue alerts, and periodic webinars. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. A reminder that the MSBA Legislative Forum is now scheduled for April 12th in Jefferson City. Check the MSBA website for registration information. There's still time to apply for a spot in MSBA Center for Education Safety's School Safety Academy coming up in early August. The academy will provide a variety of courses at no cost for certification of participants as school safety specialists. The School Safety Academy is open to all school safety coordinators, school resource officers, school protection officers, and other key school safety personnel. Space is limited. Check the Center for Education Safety section of the MSBA website for information on the application process to attend the academy. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
We don't have any public comments. We don't have our board's spotlight. Our next item is our principal and director reports. Elementary principal, Mr. Quinn Hall.
Yesterday, I went to City Hall. Mayor Burley Lofton signed that April will be child abuse awareness month. We always do that in coordination with the Go Blue Committee of the community, and we just appreciate that everybody pitches in and includes us in that lower ever.
Thank you. Our next is our middle school principal, Ms. Patricia Nelson.
So in the middle school, we've been working on a new way to recognize our students for the good deed they do. So recently, we just went through our first round of drawings. Our teachers each fill out a little slip of paper that has a student's name and the good deed that they saw them doing. We then have a drawing, and we take those names, those students, and announce them over the speaker. They get to come down and pick a price out of our bear cabinet, and then we put their picture along with the description of what they did on the wall. So it just gives us another way to celebrate our students' achievements.
Thank you. Our high school principal, Dr. Teresa Nash.
Every month, we recognize four students, two of those as academic students of the month and two of them as citizens of the month. This for March, we had two students for academic students of the month. They were Adriana Evans and Mason Cole. These students are sponsored by Great Southern Bank. They get a gift card, a certificate. They're recognized at the Ava Chamber Luncheon. And then the citizens of the month this month were Ava Johnson and Ethan Donnelly, and they get the same thing, only they are sponsored by Humphrey Bank. And we're just glad that we have a community that wants to step up and help us celebrate our great kids.
Thank you. Food and service, Ms. Yvonne Ottercam.
We catered the Chamber Commerce Luncheon.
If they have access to more consistent and quality programs and services, the new Office of Childhood will be in place by August 28th. By the way, MSBA's Future Builders Foundation is now accepting applications for the 2021 Early Childhood Education Program of the Year awards. There will be three awards for exemplary early childhood education programs based on school district size. Applications will be judged by the Future Builders Board of Directors in April. The deadline for submitting an application is March 31st. MSBA continues to be concerned about several issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that would be harmful to our public schools. They include the expansion of charter schools without adequate accountability, the creation of virtual charter schools, and tax credit voucher programs, sometimes called empowerment scholarship accounts, that would funnel public dollars to private schools that are not accountable to taxpayers. There are also bills under consideration that would create a system of open enrollment among school districts, allowing students in one district to attend school in another district free of charge. The resident district would then be required to pay the non-resident district the per pupil local effort, and the non-resident district can count the student as a resident for the purpose of state and federal aid. Jefferson City School Board member Ken Enlow testified at a recent legislative hearing. He's concerned taxpayers from one school district could end up financially subsidizing another school district.
We all know district levies are passed by local taxpayers with the expectation that those funds and those dollars are going to be used locally in that district, and so we obviously have a concern about any legislation that would cause that to be messed with. To me, it's the equivalent of taking the state taxes that I pay to Missouri and then someone telling you as the legislature to send those dollars to Illinois and let them decide how they're used, and I don't think that's a great idea.
As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, our Twitter feed with up-to-the-minute developments, through critical issue alerts, and periodic webinars. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. A reminder that the MSBA Legislative Forum is now scheduled for April 12th in Jefferson City. Check the MSBA website for registration information. There's still time to apply for a spot in MSBA Center for Education Safety's School Safety Academy coming up in early August. The academy will provide a variety of courses at no cost for certification of participants as school safety specialists. The School Safety Academy is open to all school safety coordinators, school resource officers, school protection officers, and other key school safety personnel. Space is limited. Check the Center for Education Safety section of the MSBA website for information on the application process to attend the academy. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
We don't have any public comments. We don't have our board's spotlight. Our next item is our principal and director reports. Elementary principal, Mr. Quinn Hall.
Yesterday, I went to City Hall. Mayor Burley Lofton signed that April will be child abuse awareness month. We always do that in coordination with the Go Blue Committee of the community, and we just appreciate that everybody pitches in and includes us in that lower ever.
Thank you. Our next is our middle school principal, Ms. Patricia Nelson.
So in the middle school, we've been working on a new way to recognize our students for the good deed they do. So recently, we just went through our first round of drawings. Our teachers each fill out a little slip of paper that has a student's name and the good deed that they saw them doing. We then have a drawing, and we take those names, those students, and announce them over the speaker. They get to come down and pick a price out of our bear cabinet, and then we put their picture along with the description of what they did on the wall. So it just gives us another way to celebrate our students' achievements.
Thank you. Our high school principal, Dr. Teresa Nash.
Every month, we recognize four students, two of those as academic students of the month and two of them as citizens of the month. This for March, we had two students for academic students of the month. They were Adriana Evans and Mason Cole. These students are sponsored by Great Southern Bank. They get a gift card, a certificate. They're recognized at the Ava Chamber Luncheon. And then the citizens of the month this month were Ava Johnson and Ethan Donnelly, and they get the same thing, only they are sponsored by Humphrey Bank. And we're just glad that we have a community that wants to step up and help us celebrate our great kids.
Thank you. Food and service, Ms. Yvonne Ottercam.
We catered the Chamber Commerce Luncheon this month, and it turned out really well. We started with the potatoes and the whole variety of the bunch of stuff, and everybody was pretty happy and full. We also catered to the teachers for the teacher conferences. We made dinner for them, and everybody was happy, so some people came back for seconds and thirds. We're trying to get caught up on the birthday parties in the elementary because when COVID was in, we got up to December, and then nothing was done. So we've got that organizing here that caught up on them this month and next month, and we'll have even the summer birthdays taken care of with the kids. We'll be giving them like a Rice Krispie treat, a Fruit Roll-Up, and then a juice cup or a juice box, and then kind of recognize every kid that has a birthday for each month and sing a happy birthday to them.
Got a question?
Yes.
I noticed from the information you gave us, there was almost 9,000 meals served in October, I mean February.
Yes.
And I think we only had, what, nine days of school?
Yes, that's correct.
So we have almost 1,000 people per day now participating?
Yes. Our numbers are still going up. They're continuing to go up. There's more doubles being started for kids in the high school and the middle school. Elementary doesn't have that option, but they're really hooking onto it in the middle school and high school.
So we were like 600 from this?
So we're in their fault. It was 6,800.
Yep, and now we're at close to 1,000 today. So we're doing pretty well.
Sounds great.
Doing great.
I'll just add one thing. The, right now, everybody gets eat-free, and that's been extended through the state until I think it's September 1st. I just sent you that email.
I think it's September 30th.
September 30th, thank you. Till September 30th of 2021. So that, that's a great thing. It happened with the state of emergency and COVID and all of that. We continue to still try to get free English lunch forms filled out because that does help in other ways, but we are still evaluating staff. The issue, you know, I know we have people that want more hours, and we're looking at that. We need lots of people for short periods of time.
Yes.
Not as many people for eight hours a day. So Yvonne and I are continuing to look at that. It's going very well. Obviously, it's different than we've ever done. We've been, you know, we feed in, I've told you this, we feed multiple locations at the high school, and we feed in half of the classrooms every day at the elementary and middle school. So continuing to evaluate that. We will be making a change on our milk purchasing after this year. Betty Erby is our Highland rep, local Highland rep, and he's getting out of the milk route, so we will start buying our milk if approved by the board from Springfield Grocery, let us come with a regular grocery truck. So things seem, things are going extremely well. Staff's working very hard. Attitude's great.
The morale has been amazing.
Teachers and, teachers and kids are liking it, so successful.
Do we know what a meal costs now? It's costing us pretty easy.
So it's hard to figure that at this point. I'll be able to give you that information when school's out, truly. I mean, just because bill, how bills run, it's hard to tell. Okay, so BJ gets this bill. It's hard to tell at this point. I'll be able to give you a better financial picture of where we're at if you get through a semester, and I can figure all of that and all my budget out. Does that make sense?
And I did.
I've tried to figure that. It's just tough.
And I did, the webinar I just attended, and Katrina did too, it has like a breakdown of how you can kind of get, but it is, it's hard to break out because everything's kind of throwing around.
Because it's just hard, the way bills come and...
Without mailing you down and holding you to anything, just ballpark. Not going to go there.
I don't even know where to guess. But happy with, happy with where, where we're headed and what we're doing.
So what are we going to do for summer school?
So we're, so, good thing that summer, we're going to talk about summer school dates, but everybody eats free breakfast and lunch in summer school. Something Yvonne and I've talked about, so we, you know, we'll have summer school for six weeks, and everybody gets to eat free for breakfast and lunch, and hopefully we have a great turnout. We'll probably, depending on summer projects, we'll feed out of one cafeteria like we have in the past. Something that I, I think would be my advice to look at, but it's for next year, is our after-school meal program. And we've talked about that a little bit. We've got to go through the application process. So anybody that stays at, stays after school will have a packaged meal. That is a revenue producer. It's free. It's packaged meals, delivered. They can pick up, you know, if they're staying for basketball practice, or if they're staying for football practice, they pick it up right after school, take it with them, eat.
So will that help?
That'll help your numbers.
The hours?
It could, yes. You'll have to, you'll have to have some people stay later. You will have to have some, a couple of people stay later to prepare that. We'll be able to expand some employees' hours to do that. Based on seniority, if anyone wants to do that, would be my suggestion. Sorry, I'm speaking out of turn.
I've also got our all cart sales set up for middle school and high school. Those have been going very well. We've been pulling anywhere between $80 and $100 a day from high school and middle school for extra snacks, and the slushes is, that's a big hit with them. And I'm kind of adding variety so they don't get tired, but the same old stuff, you know, the Chuck Mix or the Rice Krispie treats, and we're kind of switching them out and switching stuff up, and it seems to be going really well.
I've heard innocent but good things about it. Thank you.
I just want to give an update on Mom. He had surgery last week. He's home, doing extremely well. He actually came to the office today. Asked him a question, and he came to find the answer. I thought he didn't, anyway. Came into our office. He's doing extremely well, so hopefully he's on, got first leg fixed, and this is the second leg.
Our executive administration reports.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a lot later on, so I'm going to keep this fairly brief. The governor did announce that he has released the rest of the foundation formula dollars that were withheld last summer, so 125 million is released for the formula. So how that works is they currently are prorating the formula into about 93%. So by June, the deputy commissioner believes it will be at 100% by June. So they'll release it, they can only release as much cash as they have on hand, but the governor did release the rest of that general, those general revenue dollars, so we should see an increase in funding through June, by, by the end of June, and that will make, that will be made up. So that is a good thing. S R 3 has been approved. We're going to talk about S R 2 in a minute. S R 3 has been approved, so there's $2 billion allocated for the state of Missouri. They are, the projection is two to three times, and that's a big span, two to three times what S R 2 was. And S R 2 is $1,792,296. So if it's two times, it's 3.5 million and some change. The only thing I would say is unfortunately, it appears to have the same timeline, September of 2023, and expenditure requirements. That's a short timeline if you count S R 2 and S R 3 together to get that money spent on what you need to spend it on, because those large ticket purchases, construction or renovation, it's hard to get all of that in. Hopefully, they will extend S R 3 out. Originally, it was going to be 2025, but we'll see. We don't have all of the guidance on it yet.
I don't remember where I heard it at. Somewhere, they said they were going to extend it to '24, but that was not, nothing subtle.
I got, the 2023, I got from the commissioner last week on my conference call with her, but she was hoping, they haven't received anything from the U.S. Department of Ed. They're pushing, the states are pushing 2025, just to give districts some time. That's all I have for now. I have a whole lot for later.
Mr. Dalton.
Well, kind of the same thing. I've just got a couple items I want to update on. When we talked last time about the number of students we still have receiving instruction virtually, you know, that number's around 70 across the district, was something we're going to need to do as we look ahead to next school year. So there's some guidelines in place before this year for students to be able to re-receive instruction that way. Well, these students are the ones that have been successful. They're, they're doing pretty well on that, so they can continue on. So we're going to send a survey just to see what students are planning to continue to do it that way now. Been trying to meet with teachers in each building. Still got some of those meetings left. You know, that doesn't mean it's going to look like what it did this fall. That's not, that's not what this looks like. These are students that through existing online programs, years talking about launch, years talking about connections academy, to those programs, but the reason we need to pin that number down, it is just an additional expense. You know, while we're looking at for this semester alone, as we've transitioned the students to those online programs, projecting that someone between 75 and 100,000 will know at the end of the semester, but that's what it looks like just for this semester. But we need to know what that number is for the number of students that intend to continue to do that. So there will be some of those surveys going out just to try to get an account on what that looks like. Something else, I know Dr. Nash had already had some conversations with our representative from jury, some for dual credit, night classes, adult classes that we have here. They've got some really interesting programs potentially that they're offering to kind of fit along with some of the things we've talked about vocational even. I think, oh, that was yesterday. I sat down with him, and just, just in those preliminary discussions, just some of the, the options, some of that can be done online. We're talking about these, with a minimal number of students being able to offer that seated. There is an expense that goes with those classes, but again, those are things we're trying to pin down and map out what some of those possibilities are for us as it relates to, and it doesn't have to be, but it might be a vocational class that is dual credit. It might be just a standalone vocational class for students trying to earn a certification that lets them transition directly into the workforce, just with some highly specialized training. training. They even asked about some summer school offerings potentially. So just, you know, I told them in that meeting, let's do some conversations we've been having as a district to try to look at. So definitely some leads, some avenues we're going to pursue and try to see if there are just additional things we can offer for our students. So excited about following up on those conversations. Questions on any of that?
When does our testing start?
April fifteenth, nineteenth, I think, is when our window opens and we'll run into, into May. It takes several weeks to do that.
I assume that after the testing, why, we'll probably have results for COVID and pre-COVID and to see how we're doing.
So that, we've talked about that a little bit. So we're taking the state assessments knowing, you know, our students missed a considerable amount, considerable amount of time. We're talking state one. So that, on the state, yes, we're taking assessments. No, they will not be used for accountability as it relates to M C I D. But that's what we've talked about locally. We want that information to see. You know, and our teachers are used to looking at their test results. All right, here are the things our kiddos did really well at in my classroom. Here are the things that for whatever reason we didn't do as well on. And, you know, we talked about that. It just, that helps us as we evaluate our curriculum. That helps us as we evaluate our resources, you know. Are we needing the resource that aligns better? Are we, is there a skill that we're struggling with? Again, whether it's a resource or a pacing guide or just our recovery, just lots of, just impacts us lots of ways, not just for M C I D. You know, that, that's the part that's easy to see. Here's the school's test results. Here's what that score grade looks like locally, independent of that. There are just lots of decisions we can make with our teams as it relates to instruction and resources and, and those, or just our instructional programs and interventions. You know, that's, some of those you get back within ten days. We hear that a lot. All right, that session ends Friday. You'll have results in ten business days. Well, it's not the results of really, those really specific broken down results as it relates to specific areas of strength and weakness. Those take a little longer to get. But you'll have some preliminary results within, within a couple of weeks. And so that's, so we're trying to map those out. We can get some of those results back before, before everybody's gone to the summer.
I've seen everybody's anxious for you.
Anxious, yes, I've been. Anxious means lots of things. No, it is. It's, it's, it is stressful with teachers in the room. They can tell you that. Especially, you know, this is here unlike any we've ever had before. This was true. Anxious, excited, anxious, nervous, as, you know.
Uncharted territory.
Correct, correct.
Question for you. We was talking about the lunch program and how we feed in multiple locations. Do we see anything out there in the future to go back to normal?
So, that's interesting. So if I have, first of all, I could tell you that.
I got one.
Slowly, I think. Not for the remainder of the school year, I, I don't think. I think we have to stay the course the remainder of the school year with all of our protocols that we have in place because they're working. We've had, it's been weeks since I quarantined kids. So nothing's working.
Correct. I think on the second, the last distribution, there's so many stimulus deals coming out. It's hard to keep up. But on the last stimulus that came out recently, is it twenty percent of that earmarked for catching up academically?
S R three.
So how, do we have an idea what we're going to do there?
So we've talked about that. So I'm waiting to see what those guidelines are. That's the S R three piece that hasn't come from the U S Department of Ed. But yes, that will be earmarked for that specifically, whether that be through professional development for teachers, whether that be through other programs for kids.
You know, they could take.
Could take.
Jump in here. Yeah, you know, whether that looks like professional development of summertime, whether that looks like additional teachers in place for intervention and tutoring. Again, we talk about teacher shortage. It's not like, but you know, while that money was in place, you know, there would be an opportunity to offer some extra training, extra inter, extra training, extra tutoring, extra intervention time to try to address that learning loss.
So I'm not committing to something, but I'm going to say that. So, you know, kindergarten, first, second, third grade, if you have kids that maybe weren't successful but didn't need to be held back in first grade, you know, you could, you could fund a transition room out of that money for a year or two. So, and you could move, I've, I've done that before where I had a K one. They weren't ready to go to first grade. So they were in a transitional kindergarten class. Well, but by October, because the numbers were so low, you had ten, ten kids in that classroom. A kid was ready to go to first grade. We caught them up. Or you had a kid move in and they went into that transition. There's lots of different ways to do that, use that money. So there, there's some pretty innovative things you can do.
That is, that's one of those conversations when you're visiting with other districts. I talk to those meetings I sit in on, and you just hear some ideas that folks have that you might not have otherwise thought of. You know, we do lots of recovery types of things with our older students, but I'm trying to think of the name they called it. But it was a summer program intended for, you know, that, yeah, younger kiddos that they were not where we want to be right now, but we've got a program in place to try to address that.
Actually, in the summer, you can fund it through summer school funding too. So that helps as well. That helps over here.
That learning loss line that you're talking, that is, all those programs, that's how you could use some of those funds for some of those activities.
So looking just at our district and how we handle the COVID situation, you know, classroom and virtual, have we reflected on that and looked to see how we could even do better if it was to happen?
If it were to happen again.
Have you had any committees or like administration meetings on that toward?
I mean, so.
Is there new ideas?
There's so many. I think I've so many facets as we're talking. But if we're talking just instructionally, you know, we addressed drastically from first semester to second as far as what that looked like just on, and that was impacting the teachers, you know, as far as utilizing. Of course, part of that was, all right, I've got these students that for whatever reason are successful at home, this online program's going to work. And if these students struggle, they came back to the classroom, you know, so there are adjustments that took place there. You know, if you're talking about the logistics of some of that, I mean, yeah, there are just so many different. If we were in that boat next, starting next year, there are things we would do differently, absolutely.
So administration's been open with the teachers and there's been conversation.
Well, now, if you're saying that we better sit down with the teachers, all right, if we had this tackled again, I'd try.
I'm sure they've got a lot of good ideas to say.
Absolutely. They're going to. So again, hey, I'm going to take your time to do this. So we talk about this April P V day. That is something I've got skills with. I'm meeting with this team and this team and this team. And as far as pulling them out of the classroom, taking up any of the free time that they're going to have. We know how stressed they've been and stretched to the limit. So we've not, as far as sitting down formally and having that kind of conversation, no. Gathering that feedback on those P V days or P L C meetings, you know, they relate after principals, that gets us. To me, that's why we made some of the adjustments we made from first semester to second, based on that feedback from teachers. I may not be understanding exactly what you're asking me, but I hope I'm answering part of that. Who knows? As we do those April, that's part of the April P V days, sitting down with those teams. All right. Looking ahead to next year, what are the resources we need, what are the things we need to consider? That's, that's part of what that looks like.
Seems like to me, from talking to other school districts and teachers and parents and stuff from other school districts, seems like we're at least as good, if not better than most, from what I understand, as far as the whole, the way the whole school year has been as a whole with quarantines and things like that. Is that, do you think that's accurate?
When you're talking number of cases and quarantines, I think it has gone as well as we could have ever known. Now, again, that to me is we're talking about the different components of that. As it comes to the cases, hey, instructionally, there's things we've done differently. As far as the district team, those measures were pretty effective, it just seems like.
I think we've done very well. Better good, move on. Discussion and action items. Item A is approval of the school calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
All right. We'd had multiple conversations. And I told you last time, once we settled on it, we went, so looking at a five-day calendar, that got pretty straightforward. The only thing to vote on that we sent out to staff was that there was a full week at Thanksgiving. We want to go Monday, Tuesday of the week of Thanksgiving. That let us get out two days earlier and pretty overwhelmingly. They wanted to go the Monday and Tuesday of the week of Thanksgiving, which moved our last day of school to May twentieth on a Friday as opposed to coming back those two days that following week. Full week of spring break, it's protected. Start date, currently, we're locked in on when that start date can be. So you're looking at August twenty-third. If that changes.
That changes where we're in that.
That could change that. But two, that gives two full weeks of Christmas protected. You know, all those days offer protected. So it's pretty straightforward. Any questions on that calendar? Looks a lot like what this year's did.
We need to approve the.
Yes, we do.
We need a motion to approve the calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Dan makes the motion. Mark second. Any more discussion? All those in favor. Motion carried sixty zero. Next item is the approval of summer school dates.
So this is summer school twenty twenty-one, twenty-nine days of summer school, May twenty-fourth through July second. Gets us out before the fourth. That's on a Sunday. Usually, that last day is pretty low numbers, but still, we need that twenty-nine, twenty-nine days to carry over for our A D A for next school year. And we make pretty good use of that twenty-nine days. So my recommendation would be May twenty-fourth through July second. We will, there's been some question about summer school pay. We'll address that as well. So that will be through the salary committee. So I'll come back with that recommendation later.
Need a motion to approve the summer school dates.
I need a motion.
Randy makes the motion. We have a second. And seconds, any discussion? I have a question. Yes. Are we going to do anything different this year for Votech classes or anything of that nature during the summer school?
So we are currently talking to, principals are currently talking to teachers. I know that because I get copied on Dr. Hall's emails. And we're getting, teachers are proposing classes currently to be offering classes during the summer. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that. We haven't locked up the schedule yet. So, and that's part of what Mr. Dalton had a conversation with jury about as well. So, but we've talked about offering ag classes, some type, you know.
We've just got to try to offer.
Yeah, we've tried to offer.
Last couple of years. A lot of just remains. I guess enough students interest to drive that. Absolutely. So we're trying to be creative. What we're offering.
Just trying to drive student numbers. So it'll be interesting, the conversations we have with jury over the next month to see what their ideas are that we could offer for summer school as well.
Any more discussion? All those in favor. Motion carried sixty zero. Item number C is discussion regarding health insurance.
Okay. So we're not, I just want to have a discussion tonight. We're not, we don't have to make any final decisions tonight. But what, the first page that you were looking at says current rates twenty, 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 twenty-one. We currently pay four hundred and seventy dollars per employee per month for, towards their health insurance premium. So our most popular plan by far is Plan Seven on that front page, Aetna Plan Seven. So that is a cost of five hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. So that means it costs a teacher a hundred and twelve dollars and forty-nine cents a month. Okay? So I see that that's what, this is our current plan. Obviously, they can go one way or the other. These are the plans they can choose from. So, and this is through MET, so Missouri Educators Trust, who's operated by Gallagher Basset. They are the plan administrator. So, Mr. Dalton and I attended, two weeks ago, attended the MET meeting. And if you, that's this approved rates for twenty-one, twenty-two. It's a three point two percent increase is what was approved. And I'm going to talk about that in just a second. So I just continue to use Plan Seven. So the same current plan that was five eighty-two forty-nine will be six oh one thirteen next year. We are going to open it up. We have another option that would be an Aetna Mercy Preferred. So then, Aetna Open Access, you can go to Cox or Mercy, either one. And that's six oh one. We're going to, they will be able to choose, inside of each plan, they'll be able to choose Aetna Open Access or Aetna Mercy Preferred. That price actually drops from what it is this year to five seventy-three forty if they went with Mercy Preferred. So they would pay a hundred and three dollars and forty cents instead of a hundred and twelve dollars. Okay, so how did they get to a three point two percent increase? So the actuary, so that's the guy that looks at all the claims data, all the money that comes in, all the money that's going out, all the expenses, recommended a four point three percent increase. That's the next page, and that was not approved. So the group minus us and one other voted to use a million dollars of their reserve funds, money in the bank, to decrease the premium from four point three to three point two, leaving a one point one percent gap. So if our claims run the same as they did this year, whatever increase we have to take this, next year, it'll be plus, so if it's four percent, you'll have to add one point one percent to that to make up the reserve dollars they used, get their, lack of a better word, savings account back up to flush. Doesn't excite me very much. Again, one other school district than us.
That voted not.
That voted not to do that. Everybody else voted to use that million dollars. My concern with Aetna, or not with Aetna, I'm sorry, with MET at this point, is they do not have a policy in place that says what the floor on their fund, on their, that their fund balance has to stay at. They don't, they don't have a floor. So they're, they're dipping into it. My, my belief is if you have an extra million dollars and you've set your floor in, eighty-five school districts, so these numbers are huge, twelve million dollars or fourteen million dollars, if that's your floor, and you're at sixteen million, I'm okay with that. But they don't have a policy in place that says what their floor is. So that's MET. That's the options we have with MET. Now, I drew a pretty picture up here. We have been in conversations for six months about a different, about another consortium, about a new consortium. So I presented all of this two weeks ago to our salary benefits committee. And I'll talk to you about that in just a second. So healthcare costs in the state of Missouri. So Aetna is eighty-five school districts strong. They are spread all over the state of Missouri from the Boot Hill to mid-Missouri to a few northern Missouri districts, mainly in southwest Missouri, but they're spread all over the state. So the highest healthcare cost in Missouri is in the Boot Hill. And we have a significant number of districts from the Boot Hill. Then you go to St. Louis, Kansas City, mid-Missouri, northern Missouri and southwest Missouri. Southwest Missouri is the cheapest healthcare cost in the state. Okay? So this new consortium, if we were to look at that, isn't it, we, we can't decide on this anyway tonight. I just want to give you information. I'll tell you what the salary committee voted. I'm just going to, there's seven schools that were at the meeting, okay? Based on these seven schools' claims data, there's about twelve million dollars in premium. Based on these seven schools' claims data, there's about $12 million in premium. And this is how this one is different than what MET is. There's about $12 million in premiums that would come into this consortium. I'm probably going to stand in somebody's way, and I apologize. So this is how the breakdown of costs would be. So out of this $12 million, there'd be a million dollars that would go automatically to a reinsurance. So to an insurance agency to reinsure claims that are over $325,000. So if you have a cancer claim or that runs, you know, those can run half a million dollars. It would pick up... This reinsurance picks up anything over $325 and pays it. And that the consortium is not responsible for at that point. Okay? MET has that as well. Then you have a million dollars that are admin costs. That's going to be the broker, the carrier, the prescription company, the actuary, the enrollment platform, and lots of other costs broke up in that million dollars. Here's where the... Here's where the difference is. So this is... You have a self-insured trust, and this is a self-insured captive. So we're going to put 1.5 million to cover claims. We're not buying insurance. We're putting it in a fund to cover claims from $100 to $325,000. Okay? So that's the captive layer. Anything not spent out of this, we get to keep. Where MET, like we had reinsurance up here, MET pays the reinsurance here. Does that make sense? So then we were automatically putting $295,000 into the reserve, or in our savings account. We'll use eight... The actuary believes about $8.2 million in claims, so that's the fund to pay the claims. And then if you look at the captive layer here, we figure we'll spend a little bit of that reserve layer here. You've got about a million and a half. We'll end... The actuary believes we'll have... End up with about a million and a half in reserve balance at the end of the year. So how does this go work? All of these schools are in southwest Missouri, and the bylaws of this group would only allow healthy schools in southwest Missouri to join it. So it's... The agent that is running all of these numbers is Barker Phillips-Jackson. The actuary is out of St. Louis, and I've worked with him before. He's really bright. We believe that this is a quality option for our school district. It's not going to save us a ton of money today, but we believe it's going to save us money moving forward for years to come, because we will be at least flat in our insurance rates, and we believe through... With these school districts involved, which are all healthy, we can be... We can have flat rates moving forward instead of taking a 4% to 5% increase every year. Okay? Any questions about this piece? And then I'll keep moving.
If your school becomes... Or is to be considered unhealthy later on, can they move you out or are you locked in?
No, you're locked in. You're locked in.
What's the ultimate goal on the reserve?
So that will be, these school districts are going to make those decisions. So we will come together as a group. So right now, MET with eighty-five school districts, they have a board of directors of about six superintendents that make all the decisions. This group... The idea of this group is to grow ten, twelve, fifteen tops. We will all sit in the room and make the decisions. Right now, it's very hard for us to have, you know, I voted no, and one other school district voted no, and there's really... They said, well, this is the recommendation of the board, all in favor, vote yes. There's no discussion. You know, Mr. Dalton will be sitting in the room with these other superintendents, having the discussion with the agent, and be able to argue the points and have a true understanding of what's happening. This is not a for-sure thing. All these people have to commit. So like I said, I'm not asking you to make a decision. This was the preferred preference of the Salary and Benefits Committee. I explained it to them the same way I'm explaining it to you. This is the preferred method or way to go with the Salary and Benefits Committee. You will have to vote on it when I can lock down the rates for you. You have a rate sheet in front of you that says Mask II Evolution. You have... One looks like our Plan 3, and one looks like Plan 10.
And it's open-ended, they can go Cox or Mercy either one?
So this is going to be a Mercy Preferred option as well. There will be a Cox option that will be at a little higher rate, but it will be a Mercy Preferred. So the carrier on this is Balance, huge in Texas. And the... Where you're really saving a ton of money is through Southern Scripps. Our prescription drug, I mean, I don't know who takes what, I just know what we pay in prescription drugs, and it's really high. So this part of that million we talked about on admin cost goes to Prescript... Goes to Southern Scripps, and they actually work with the employee. There are lots of programs through drug companies that can help you get it at a reduced or free rate. They will work with the employee to make that happen and save that employee money. That's part of their commitment, and it's part of what they do. They work with several large consortiums in Texas and Barker Phillips-Jackson here in Missouri. So there's one other option, and then you can ask me any question, and I'll try to answer them. MEUHP, so MEUHP is attractive when you look at it. Their rates are cheaper. Their co-insurance is better than ours. We are rated because we are a very healthy district. We run anywhere from 77% to 82% loss ratio. So that means we spend 77... Our costs are 77% to 82% of the premiums that we pay. Means we're supporting other school districts in our consortium. You know, our 20... Our 18% to 23% are helping them that are unhealthy. The MEUHP is a self-funded trust. It's another, like MET in the state of Missouri. They rated us as a Tier 1, so that's their best rate possible. You are locked into this Tier 1 for two years. They can't move you. There's a 5% difference in their Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. These are the cheapest rates you're going to see. My concern with MEUHP, and I need to do a little more research before we make a final decision, is they had an assessment. They assessed every school district last year, not this year. Last year, so much per employee. So that would have... Mid-year in December, our cost on that would have been about $100,000.
Say that one more time.
They made an assessment to each district based on their employee count, because they were running short of money. And our cost would... We would have had to pay in December an additional fee beyond what we pay the four seventy a month per employee of $100,000. Now, as a superintendent, I'm not going to go to a teacher and say, hey, we got an insurance assessment. I know you were paying $112 a month, but your portion of this is another $650 I need from you in December. I'm not going to do that.
Is that common?
It happens. Not very often, but it does happen. You know, that would be the school district eating that hundred grand, because this board's never going to vote to ask the teacher for $650. I wouldn't think. I wouldn't be the one to want to deliver that. Mr. Dalton would get to. But if I'm sitting in his seat, I wouldn't want to be the one to deliver... Send that email. That would be more pink mail than you've ever seen. And that's okay. You know, the district would eat that cost. Now, I want to do some more research on MEUHP. What I'm asking for from the board, I guess, is we don't have to make a final, final decision. We will have to make it no later than our April meeting. Actually, MET really wants it next week. They're not going to get it. Unless you tell me, hey, we're not interested in this. If you tell me we're not interested in this, we'll go back to MET. Salary and Benefits Committee would like... They voted that this was their favorite option, wanted to see more information, which all of our... This company needed our February claims data to give a final total, and they had... They received it Monday. So the actuary hasn't put all the numbers together, but I talked to Barker Phillips-Jackson yesterday... Or today, and they're... Hopefully, they have those rates out every next week.
What was it the committee liked about that?
They liked that it was more control by the school districts, because you had a smaller number. They liked the long... The perceived by the actuary, and I believe it as well, the long-term stability, lower rates moving forward, able to control costs more. They're not going to save money this year. I mean, I think we'll do something with our side of what we pay per month, so that's going to help teachers. But... Because we're going to... We'll have to, and I'll talk about that. Just more local control instead of the big eighty-five-person consortium.
I know the part when we were talking about it, it gets nineteen to one, he said, it's a smaller group, you feel like you can sit in the room and at least have some input. You know, when we went to the other meetings, he said about schools, like he said, hey, we don't like this. Anybody interested in Y? No, what's going on? You know, so you're sitting with a smaller group, and in my mind, it makes sense, hey, we're going to limit this to our region of the state where we know the healthcare costs are lower. I think that appealed. I mean, hey, that makes sense that we can help control our costs that way.
So something else we didn't... I didn't just... So Balance, this is the biggest part. I'm sorry, I missed this. So Cox and Mercy, let's pick a procedure. Appendectomy, okay? So somebody has an appendectomy.
I have one next week now.
Okay? So Cox and Mercy, so this is interesting. Cox and Mercy can set the cost of an appendectomy at whatever they choose to set in that. There's no regulation on that. Okay? So we're going to say $10,000. May cost more than... I don't know. Just going to guess. So we currently have Aetna, and then Anthem is another big carrier. They come in and they negotiate with Cox and Mercy, hey, we're going to negotiate a 50% discount. So it's only going to cost $5,000. Something that's interesting here, so the... I always forget the name. Balance has negotiated with Mercy. So Medicaid, they don't negotiate. They set the rate for an appendectomy. They don't negotiate with Cox and Mercy. They say it's worth, for lack of a better number, $2,000. Balance has negotiated with Mercy that they're going to pay three times... Or two times, I'm sorry, two times whatever the Medicaid cost is. So whatever this number is here, they're going to... They negotiate, we're going to pay you two times, and that's all we're going to pay. And Mercy has taken that. They've agreed with that. And that contract is in perpetuity.
Really?
Yes. With Mercy.
So do we know what our district prefers, whether it's Mercy or Cox?
We don't, and we have no way of knowing that. So as we move forward, that's something we'll have to... You know, so we were a Mercy network for a long time. Only in the last two years have we been an open Cox or Mercy system. You will drive the... And I was an advocate of that. I mean, I won't... I'm a Cox guy. My daughter works there. They pay her bills. But if you have an open network, you can't drive the deep discount. You know, if you are a single source, you can still go to Cox, it's just out of network. You don't drive as big a discount when you are negotiating with two versus negotiating with one. If they know they're getting all 1,200 employees at Mercy, they're going to give you a deeper discount if they're only... Rather than if they figure they're getting 50% or 600. Does that make sense? So I've given this... So the Salary... The Salary Committee is supposed to be back talking to their teachers about this. Obviously, it was right before spring break, so that may not have completely happened, but should be happening, and I'll remind them of that. The other good thing is... So the other question we had was deductibles. So your plan usually runs July 1st to June 30th, but your deductible period runs January 1st through December 31st, which is odd. But the deductible, anybody... And Wendy asked this question, so... Because she's met her deductible, as you can tell, where her deductible carry over to the new company, and the new company will give you credit for your deductible from January to June. They'll give you credit this first year, and that will carry forward.
Do we have a deadline of when we've got to make a decision and be ready to go?
We're... No, it would be the latest April, 15. That would be the latest. And I will be able to give you... These people all got to commit to make this thing make. And I'll be able to give you that answer pretty quick. But I need to tell them whether we're in... Yeah, we're highly interested. We want to see the rates, but we're highly interested. Or we're not interested, because that's going to push other people to do something else.
Do you like it, Mr. Dalton?
The rationale behind it makes sense to me.
He's gotten a crash course in something, sure, crash in the last two weeks.
To me, the question is, Matt, we know what we're getting. It's been in existence for several years. You know what that looks like. Now, with that, what you know you're getting is an increase every... I mean, it's just proven. That's just what that's going to look like. This is not being done here. The logic behind it makes sense.
So if you go... There's nothing that says if you go out of MET and somewhere else, you can't go back to MET. And we are attractive.
Yeah.
So that's seven schools. Is that going to be like the limit? Are you going to...
No.
Are they going to add more?
We're up to 15.
Up to 15, okay.
So if MET got so big, and you're taking it in those other areas, you're just... You're accounting for that higher...
Yes.
Health insurance or healthcare cost.
With this one here, if it's a group of healthy schools...
Mm-hmm.
And the reserve build up?
You can control your costs.
Yes. And at some point, when the reserve would build up, the cost might come down a little bit.
Correct. And that's... That is what they are hoping. You know, we may be stable with what we have this year. If you have a good year next year, you could actually reduce the rate.
And it's going to depend on...
I've never seen it happen.
But it's all going to depend on how many healthy schools you get in, if you can give it.
And they have only approached healthy schools. There's only healthy schools sitting at the table. So they have evaluated each school individually, and some they've said... One of our conference schools, they said, sorry, you're not healthy. We can't have you here in this... They're saying that.
I'm good with it.
I do. So keep proceeding? Okay?
Stay in the conversation.
Yeah, stay in the conversation. That's what I need.
Yes.
Stay in the conversation.
Next item is discussion regarding the SRR2 fund.
Okay.
We've got to team up on it.
So this is just preliminary. This is a tentative, is why I haven't called. Mr. Dalton and I brainstormed on the board in my office to... I'm not sure he has one, but someone's over there. So I'll get up and write in a second. So we have... Our SRR2 fund allocation is $1,792,296. You all have... I gave you all a list of 15 items that you can spend on. So these are not prioritized, but I'm going to go through each one of them individually. So I talked about 55 heating and air conditioning units that are 2009 and older, plus that elementary gym that is currently only has heat, does not have air conditioning, and so no air moves through that unit or through that gym when it's hot. moves through that unit or through that gym when it's hot or when it's wet. We're guessing right at $800,000 to do that, we'll have to get bids, obviously. Elementary asbestos removal, I have some bids currently for the removal and the replacement, I'm expecting several more. I had a guy come today, that's about $125,000, that would finish the elementary completely of asbestos. The only thing we'd have left with asbestos is the West High School. You could look at S R 3 money if you wanted to for that. We currently have an old, we have two old outdated control systems which control our HVAC units, which makes, kicks them on and off, it's going to help with energy, you know, it brings them on at certain times, it staggers them, but it also keeps air movement, you need, you know, you need to change air in a room every four minutes, or four, I'm sorry, four air changes an hour is the ASRA rating for air quality. So then we go to replacement of salaries. So, this is going to help fund salary increases over the next two years, this is kind of how I have it targeted. $400,000 will help fund salary increases over the next two years. Then there's another pot of $250,000 that will get money into teachers' pockets over the next two summers, and Mr. Dalton, you want to talk about that briefly?
So, one of the criteria there, when you look at that, goes back to learning loss. And then, so you can, you can, you can't do, it says specifically, you can't do bonuses, you can't do, anyway, one of the things you can do is incentivize some of that training to address the learning loss with students, so that would just, that would be a way to increase what that looks like on the summer PD stipend. Because we've done summer PD days for years, we can certainly make it more attractive.
More attractive for them to come, so, we haven't settled, he hasn't settled on that yet, but significantly increasing their daily rate over the next two summers for those PD days. So, that's trying to get it in their, in their pockets pretty, really quick, other than just salary. And then we could, the 46 Promethean boards that we bought for the high school, we can reimburse ourselves for that if we chose to, and that's the cost of $86,000. So that's $1,761,100 out of the $1,792,296. The question had come about, can we use this money to pay off our lease, our current leases, our lease purchases? The answer to that is no, you can't use this money to pay off existing debt. So we owe about 2.6 million, $2,648,495 is what we currently owe in our lease purchases. But what this is going to do is free up some Fund 4 dollars that you can pay off some of that debt quicker if you choose to. So, the issue around paying off that debt is you can't get enough money from Fund 1 to Fund 4. So you're, you are limited by a max transfer rule, so I've estimated, just based on the numbers I have today, so our max transfer will be, in June, will be $621,659.76. That is, that formula is 7% times your state adequacy target, which is 63.75, times your weighted ADA, that's how you come up with it. There's another one, and then there's a little bit of a transportation transfer you can make as well. But, I say that to say this, if we used the money in those categories that we have them laid, we can build a Fund 4 balance to pay off those lease purchases much quicker.
Don't we already have a million dollars in there?
We, well, we spent part of that, but yes, we transfer, I think we tran, we got, we started it this year at 1.2 million. So we pay all of our lease purchases out of that Fund 4 every year, it has to come out of there, plus anything that costs over a thousand dollars, we pay out of Fund 4. So, some of this stuff, so you're going to reimburse $86,000 to it, and then we spend a significant amount of money on HVAC repairs or replacements a year that we'll be able to save as well. Does that make sense? I'm making sense to you? So I think you'll be able to build that fund pretty quickly, and we have a, we have one lease purchase that's $175,000, I think you could pay it off, you know, if he was comfortable, by November, December next year. I think we will pay off, if with your approval, pay off the bus, it comes out, you know, we did a lease on that bus, a two-year lease, we'll pay it off this school year, instead of waiting until September. This is preliminary, but I just wanted to get some feedback on that.
So, can I ask you to stick your neck out there again?
Okay.
Is it possible in the two years we would have this paid for, our debt?
I think that's a little bit of a struggle, Dan, to be honest, I think you could, I think, so you've got 1 in '22, I think you can pay it off pretty quick, you've got 1 in '25, and you've got 1 in '27, we're 7.21. So, I think by '25 you could extinguish it. So four years. Now, the interesting thing about S R 3, and I want to see the specifics on S R 3, we, without amount of money, I think we may be able to do some other things to help free up some money for possible renovation, construction. So, I don't know, I don't know yet. I need to see the guidelines.
So, if we can't transfer that money out of Fund 1 over to Fund 4 more than $600,000, aren't we going to build our Fund 1 up?
Well, so that's, so that, what my thought process is, and this is Jason's thought process, I'm, I'm making decisions, I'm making suggestions, so when I look at, so I look, you know, you and I have talked about how much on the, on the salary schedule to do. So, I'm trying to give, because I think this money's going to dry up, you know, if we spend it September of 2023, I'm trying to give him five to six years of being able to not have to worry about, he's going to be drawn down on Fund 1, transferred to Fund 1, Fund 2, be able to afford those raises for the next five to six years. Yes, we are going to increase that, but if we did $1,000 on the base, that's going to, don't quote me on this number, because I did it yesterday, but I don't remember exactly, it's close to $300,000, $286,000. So, in a normal year, I would want to stay under 200, but I think you can afford to do some things, carry you out five or six years by building that number up. You're going to deficit spend, but I think that's okay, because if you build it up to a certain amount, you can deficit spend and afford, and be able to afford raises for the next four to five, six years.
So, we're going to know a lot more about this in the next month or?
Absolutely. Yeah, and we don't have to, I'm just trying to give you a preliminary thought, that's why it says tentative.
Well, we always say throw ideas out there.
So I have a question about, since we're discussing money, since our financials said this, this month that we have $6.7 million in the bank, I'd like to know why teachers are still having to buy Kleenexes for their rooms, I'd like to know why they're having to buy Clorox wipes, and why we don't have supply closets in each of the buildings to take care of that. By the way, Tax Diva is donating those to the school for the teachers, so I'm just curious, why we can't do that with that much money in the bank?
I can't answer that question, I mean, I, I've not.
How's that not a question I have to answer?
I've not turned anything down for the request that's come to me on a purchase order, or not, not signed a purchase order that's come to me to buy supplies.
Well, we've got teachers still buying our own supplies, we've got teachers going to parents and asking them to bring Kleenexes in and everything like that.
I will have principals next week order all the supplies.
So I'm making a motion, I would like to make a motion. I make a motion that a supply closet be put in each building, and that the district keeps it stocked at all times with supplies the teachers need, with an example being Kleenex and Clorox wipes.
Okay. Second that.
Motion has been made to put a supply closet in each building, and is that all we're going to keep it supplied with?
We are going to keep, no, we're going to keep supply with what the teachers need. Those were just examples.
I'll take care of it.
And keep it supplied, the motion's been made, it has been seconded, any discussion?
I think we've talked about this before.
We have, like I said, I've not turned any request down, I don't know.
But you wouldn't, they wouldn't have to request if they had a supply closet in every building.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion period, 6 to 8.
Okay, so, more information to come, I'm just, again, trying to set the stage, we are receiving pricing, not committing to any, but receiving pricing now, because if we are going to do any asbestos, we'll have to make that decision in an angle in order to get those people scheduled.
Well, can we go get these air conditioners? I don't know exactly what the answer is, but I would like to have independent consultant or something, cheapest isn't necessarily the best, something that's priced a lot more money may be more efficient.
So I had a conversation with a guy yesterday, or day before yesterday, that's independent. The first thing you need to do in order to make it fit S R 2 guidelines is do an air quality study, it's pretty cheap to do that, $6,000 or $7,000, you do an air quality study across the district, especially in the places that we're replacing these units. But then, I agree with that, then you solicit bids for the equipment, the best, good, you know, you have some standards on your equipment.
You know, where does kind of this money, and if you pay it again, you're essentially down the road forever and ever and ever, but if you buy something that's gentle, it's just going to be.
You got to fix it for years, and then make it good.
You know, I've got ground source heat from the head for almost 30 years, just.
It's been a lot upfront, but you haven't touched it lately.
Right.
I agree with that.
I, I have a question, on these PD stipend, you're spacing them out over two years.
That's the initial thought process, yes. So that would, so that number, we came up with that number, each teacher could attend PD this summer and put $1,000 in their pocket.
Yeah, but this, this is coming out of S R 2, and we're going to get S R 3, which is even more money short, why are we spacing this out over two years?
We didn't have all this, when we developed this, we didn't have all the specifics on S R 3, we've not seen those specifics. Like I said, any of this can change, we're just trying to, we haven't put this budget in yet. When I get some more specifics on S R 3, the next month, I can come back to you with more concrete answers. But no, you can.
That's hard, it's hard to play on what we know.
Yeah, it's a plan on what we can currently live with. When we get S R 3 guidelines, we can make those changes in an angle. I understand what you're saying.
And, and we can't do any kind of incentive for any?
Can I do a bonus?
Incentive?
No, it's a bonus, you cannot do that, and with these dollars. It's very specific.
But you could do another stipend for the whole?
Yes, like we did before.
Like we did before.
With our contract.
For all of us.
Right. We'd have to figure out what that entailed, but yes.
That's a day of time and effort law.
Yeah, you have to have a time and effort law.
What if we go for that?
Couldn't we tie this stipend into, what am I trying to say? Could we tie it in to signing a contract for next year? I mean, I mean, could we, could we pay the stipend in September with first paycheck?
With a contracted list of?
I have to think about that a little bit, I can't give you that answer, I don't, I'm going to think through that a little bit. Is that fair?
Yeah, but, yeah.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I just need to think through the legality of it.
But I don't understand why we're hanging on to this money if, you know, for two years, or planning on it for two years if we.
Got another pot coming, and I, I understand your thought process there, this is what we knew on S R 2. When we get S R 3, this may, we can change this a little bit. When I, when I have that, when we have those guidelines on S R 2, this is what we were comfortable telling you with what the guidelines we had in front of us. Is that? Because there's going to be more, you know, that S R 3 is going to help with replacement of salaries, and it's going to help with more stipend stuff, we're, I just don't have the guidelines in front of me.
This replacement of the salaries?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
So that's going to help finance raises over the next couple of, more, more significant raises over the next several years, that's what I said, I think we can position ourself for five or six years to be able to do more significant raises than we would generally.
Okay, and that's just on S R 2?
Yes.
Right, that's, that has nothing to do with what's coming?
No.
But, we've got to be careful that it's sustainable.
Correct. That's what I was trying to push out, be able to do that over a five or six year period. You know, like I said, if you gave, again, not talk to the salary committee about this, but if you gave 100, if you gave $1,000, so people either get $1,500 or $1,675, depending on where they were for next year, that, that number's close to $300,000, ongoing every year. So this will help with that, so you figure, let's just figure you're picking up $200,000 district, current district dollars, you're picking up 100 there, if you pick up another $180 next year, you pick up another 100 from there, another $180 next year.
So this, this, let's stretch it out for four years.
Yes, yes.
From the next meeting, can you draw us a, some kind of chart showing us how much we can increase salaries?
I can try. I can give you figures that, I can absolutely give you figures based on what our current salary schedule looks like, whether I put 100 or $1,000 or $2,000 or $1,500, I can absolutely do that. You know, it's hard to project, depending on who you hire, that changes every year on what you're spending in salary benefits, but yes, I can, we can figure that out.
I agree with Lowell, I want to give all the raises we can give, but I don't want to be the guy five years from now that they point a finger at and says, you bankrupted our school.
Me either. That's why I'm trying, that's why I'm trying to make some pattern, I don't want to give them to call me and say, what did you do to me? That's, that's the thought process behind it. But yes, I think I can give you some numbers.
And with S R 3 coming on, there's no telling what we're going to do.
Correct, correct, we're going to continue to, when we get more information there, we can rerun some projections. But, you know, we want it to be, I don't want to walk out and in two years you say, that idiot, he killed us. But I want him to be able to be the good guy and say, hey, I'm going to give you $1,000 this year, I'm going to give you $1,000 next, I'm going to be able to do that. That's the thought process behind what I'm doing.
We could put an actual example out there to show everybody, this is where we think we can go, you know? That could be a big.
Yep. I agree. Yeah, I think I can, Matt has some spreadsheet though.
Has the, has the governor indicated, you know, before the COVID came on, he was talking about salaries for teachers, and, you know, has he said anything else?
Yeah, he told the commissioner to figure it out, there's no money in this budget for it, they figured out how to do it.
Well, you know, Missouri's like one of the last lowest paid states.
Number 40.
48?
44, somewhere in there, in the 40s.
And then if, and if you look at Missouri and look at.
As far as state dollars, yeah, absolutely.
And then if you look at Missouri and look at our area, we're the poorest of the poorest of the town.
Yes. Yes, everything that touches Missouri is higher than we.
I don't know what the answer is, but we've got to figure out something.
So the governor made that, he, and the commissioner actually said that last week, she'd had a conversation with him, and he's like, I don't have any more dollars to give you, but you need to figure out raise teacher salaries.
Well, seems to me like the Senate and the House are pretty busy wasting time on some of the stuff they're doing toward education, and, you know, once in a while your teacher salaries addressed and then it pretty much sounded good and it's gone. What can we do to put more pressure on as a district or as a board or as a teacher organization?
So, you know, we've been, you know, M S T A and N E A advocate all the time, they're the state teacher organizations up there. Mr. Dalton, I've been up there twice in the last two weeks, Mr. Dalton and I went, week and a half ago, and had some pretty good conversation. We got Senate Bill fifty-five, which I thought was a colossal disaster, killed. We'll see where some of this other goes. So, in my opinion, legislators want to hear from teachers more than they want to hear from superintendents and for sure state associations. You know, they, they always say they're fully funding the formula, they're fully funding the formula, but in actu, in actuality, five years ago, they, they changed the formula to take the three hundred and twenty million that they were underfunding the formula, they changed it to show that they were fully funding the formula. So that was three hundred and twenty million five years ago, we're well over five hundred million dollars short currently. The only way that, I, I don't, I don't know the answer, but the only way is if they change the formula to get more money to school districts, or you raise your local levy to raise teacher salaries. And everybody's scared to open the formula, including the guy sitting in this chair, because no, we don't know what happens to, when it gets opened, it's open, and anybody can do anything to it. That gets scary. I don't have an answer for you.
Maybe all the schools just need to load up most of all the teachers and go up there and drop them off.
Let them go.
Has anybody asked the teachers?
No, we have not, no, but we'll go through, we'll take all this through salary committee. Have not done that yet. The only, we met one time when we talked about insurance, that's all the time we have at that point. Because I don't, I mean, this, I will be talking to them this month, starting here, not next week, but the week after, start talking about salaries and benefits as we move forward. Because I want to do something with summer school pay, I want to do something with the defined contribution on the insurance. We want to do something with salaries, and I'll start to be able to run those numbers.
We do have that list that came from teachers.
Yeah, yes.
So that, I mean, some of that comes from.
We have this, that came from teachers. So we, yeah, some, even before. What you have here is coming from here. Some of that comes from this, but I have not met with the committee to talk about salary.
I have a copy of that list that you have, Dr. Dalton, if y'all would like a copy. This is input from teachers, about their request with the S money, the input from all three buildings.
I don't think we're making, yeah, I don't think we're making any decisions tonight about anything. Thanks.
Would you like to read this first page?
I'm not either, I don't.
Well, if you don't want to, I don't want to put you on the spot. Go get somebody else to do it.
First, the teachers would like to say thank you to board. We were very grateful for the additional money received right at Christmas time this year. It not only made our holidays a little easier, but it also gave us a sense of being appreciative. It let us know that our administration recognizes the challenges and extra work that we have all taken on due to the pandemic. We thank you for the money and the recognition of our hard work. Next, with the newest S R two funds, along with the monies predicted to come to our district in the next round of COVID money, we respectfully request that all the items be considered. After talking with many and most teachers in each building, we have compiled a list of items for consideration. Although the items on the list, on the request list of each building, many times overlapped, we thought it would be better to provide the list to you by building, and we have posted each building's list at the end of this document. We are very proud that our district remained open and functioning throughout the twenty twenty-one school year, as many around us had to shut down temporarily. This is due to the diligence of our teachers and administration complying to C E C recommendations, adapting to whatever new regulations were handed down, and many, many extra man hours to make sure our students kept learning. District-wide, the one thing that teachers completely agree on is putting some of this money back into teachers' pockets. One way of doing this is another lump sum payment like we saw in December. However, that does nothing for retaining teachers. Assigning instead of seems to serve both purposes. We are asking for a significant employment incentive to be given to any certified teacher that signs a contract with twenty-one, twenty-two school year, new as well as returning. This money could be distributed with the first paycheck of the school year. This would also serve the purpose of attracting new teachers to the district, retaining current personnel that may be looking to retire, or those considering moving to a neighboring district within, with four day weeks, better pay and benefits. The second thing that would aid in retention of our current teachers and attracting new teachers to ABA would be adding money to the base of our current salary schedule. We are asking for a significant increase on the base. This would affect every certified employee in the district. Higher pay is a big incentive for drawing new teachers to the district as well. We simply need to pay teachers what they are worth. Teachers are investing four years of time and money in college, many have gone back and invested even more time and money to attain a master's degree. We remain invested in teaching our students, whether preparing to start our career or add to our years of service education. Please make it worth our time and effort to continue with the ABA R one school district.
Thank you.
So none of this money can be used for any of these things?
Yeah, for several, for several of the things that they're asking for, but not, I don't believe you can use it for an incentive. You can use it for, like we used before, the contract for extra duty, but it specifically states in the documentation, you can't use it for bonuses, and that's an incentive.
But it can be used if we gave them.
Contract, an extra duty contract, like we.
Like we did in December.
Yes.
So you're talking about an extra duty with the, using the P D day for that?
No, that's separate. That's the two, that's separate.
The replacement of salaries, that can be used for that?
Yes, you could use, you could use part of that.
Can I say that one more time?
Well, he's saying that we could use it to give them a contract, like, like the thousand dollars that we gave them in December, we could use the four hundred thousand dollars for that.
Well, you can.
Okay, but you're wanting to do it for them.
I'm just saying.
You're just saying.
Trying to carry raises moving forward over the next several years, just bigger raises than they're used to. You've got to think about how to carry that forward over the next five to six years. You've got some money, we banked some money, so we built some fund balance to do that. Some additional, whether it be S R two or S R three, would help you do some more, that's going to carry out over five or six years and not hamstring you in other areas.
So you think that if we stretch this out over this period of time, is that going to bring new teachers in? Is that going to?
You're going to be able to add to your base as you go significantly.
But that could be fun, you know, get to the point where it needs to be at five years from now.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying out of just S R two is you could theoretically put a thousand dollars on the base this year, theoretically, maybe a thousand next year. So you are making pretty significant progress in a fairly short time, other than, you know, if we were looking at five hundred a year, you know, you're doubling.
So if we.
It's early.
I know, but I know these teachers have been through a lot, and they're not, I'm not saying everybody has a fit, but they've been through a lot in this last year.
And that's why a significant portion of this is money to teachers, trying to get money in teachers' pockets. And S R three would be the same thing. We are looking at ways to try to get money in our pockets immediately. We agree with that.
Okay.
We are absolutely on board with that.
So have we, probably not, since you said you haven't had a salary meeting, but if you asked the teachers if they would prefer a payment now?
I have not yet.
Or this extended?
Yeah, I have not, that's what I need to.
Because we were able to give them a significant raise this last year before any of this COVID stuff hit. So what I'm asking is, I mean, what's to say we won't be able to continue to do what we've done going forward, even taking this out of the picture? I mean, that's, right? I mean.
Yeah, I, I just don't see a significant increase in tax revenue either of the state levy or the state levy for years to come.
And why do you see that?
Well, our assess valuation has been fairly flat forever, and actually decreased to this year. State adequacy target has not moved, didn't move last year or this year, they've got to refigure it this spring, and that's what the formula is based on. I will have a better idea when we get that new figure in angle.
Okay, so from what I can see, there's several teachers here. So I'd like to know your opinion. Would you, no, I do, I want to know. Would you rather see a, was it contract bonus? No, not a bonus, contract?
An extra duty contract.
An extra duty contract for a significant amount now?
What's significant?
Well, just good, I don't, I'm thinking of that.
Are we talking about this school year? Are we talking about this school year? Twenty twenty-one?
I'm talking when they sign their contract, or when they come back next year.
Out of, out of F Y twenty-one?
Yes.
Well, we have.
And why can't we do it this year?
You've already done it.
You can only do it once a year?
You already did a contract for extra duty.
But you can't do another one?
Well, this one, this one extended, this language in that contract was for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And you drove that contract?
You all approved it, I grew up, or attorney grew up, actually.
Okay, I'm back to my question.
I'll make a comment.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we really appreciated the thousand dollar extra duty stipend. For me, after taxes and retirement, we roughly, you know, it was in the six hundred dollar range that, that we benefited from, right at Christmas time. When our, and I, I love raises too. When our, when our raises are, are given, let's say that thousand dollars to your base salary, when it's divided out among the twelve months and retirement, you know, we're taxed on it, I've had years my paycheck has increased ten bucks a month. I benefit from, and plus, you know, ten years ago, we had career ladder, I was an employee here when we had career ladder. It has taken, and this, I heard a teacher say, a veteran teacher say, it has, it took until our raise this year, getting our step back, that that teacher is making what she made ten years ago.
That is true, because I would say that happened to me as well.
So what's more important to?
It's more important for me, I would rather have six hundred dollars in my pocket or whatever, you know, that was on the thousand dollar extra duty. Right now, we're going through this right now. We are putting the extra hours in right now.
See, that's what I think, but I'm not a teacher.
Yeah, in my mind, my mind's out. You know, rather than ten or twelve dollars or twenty dollars spread out over twelve months for five years, you know, it's, it helps a family more right now. I take away from my family at home when I am, my door, my classroom door this year has been a revolving door with kids quarantined.
I'm sure.
For parents being, you know, positive, I had to stay countless hours doing sub plans, and then I have these kids come back, and there's such a gap that, you know, trying to get them caught up with, and prepare work for them to take home. We're doing this right now.
So there's absolutely no way something can be done right now, Dr. Dalton? Based on the, whatever it was?
Based on the current contract they have. I've got a question. We were talking about adding a thousand to the salary schedule.
To the base.
Two years ago, or two thousand now, let's see where we are next year.
My number, my number was three thousand. That was Dina's number. And don't, it's okay, just contact her. But Dina's number was three thousand for the teachers and a thousand for the non-certified. Or three thousand for the certified and a thousand for the non-certified.
I want to speak up here. I think what we're trying to do is find the balance. What is the number we can do right now and make that as much as we can, while also doing something that we know is sustainable, where allows us to do those raises? And I know what you're saying, hey, if we're going to do two thousand in two years, why don't we do two thousand now?
Because it's, next year, if you do another thing, it's three thousand, it's just, you got to figure out what the happy medium is in balance.
I mean, that's, our goal is to do as much as we can now, while also doing something on the base to do something sustainable.
I, I don't know what three thousand costs. Don't have my head.
Well, I would say probably, we got a hundred, and how many teachers we got?
Three hundred.
No, we have a hundred.
Forty-five thousand.
Yeah, something like that, three hundred fifty? Wouldn't it be about three hundred?
If you did three thousand, you're over half a million dollars. Here, here's one of the problems with. How many teachers, how many certified, I forgot.
You've got to count the benefits of retiring.
Okay. One problem we're going to have with teachers, especially new teachers, is they go to college for four years and they spend all this money and time getting a degree, and our salary schedule starts out at thirty-one thousand five hundred, forty-five hundred, that goes to retirement, that's not controllable, but they have to pay that. That leaves them twenty-seven thousand dollars, and now if they buy insurance, that's going to be a hundred dollars a month, now they're, who's going to come out and go to work for twenty-six thousand dollars? So we need to raise everything up. And I don't think, the school can't do it all by itself, the state's going to have to do something, but we need to do everything we can do to get it up there.
You know, you learn the budget, it's up to say, I, I, as a single person, I mean, and I'll always say, we should be paid more, but when you put that stress on a school by themselves and not as a state overall, that's, that's going to be difficult for where you're going to come from, and, and I don't care what you do on people, that you give this big sum, they absorb it and assume that's their life right then. So as they go on, and then when we don't have this money and if we can't pay it, that can, because I mean, it would be nice if we all understood and got through our heads that you shouldn't go out and buy that card, it's going to make that huge payment, thinking, I'm going to have this forever, but we may not. And so, I mean, I, and I hundred percent think that, yes, we, I know what I have, I'm going to retire in a couple of years and I just paying off my student loans. So that tells a lot, but until the state produces, just says, yes, we need to do something, I mean, other states are doing so much more, it's like Washington, I was talking to a person, they have their own sub, and it's for the whole state, pays them retirement, pays them, pays them health insurance, just their subs, and that's what they're doing for their teachers, but that's because Washington has made this their goal. So, I mean, you just can't squeeze what out of a term.
My, my only, I want to give as much money as I can to teachers.
for their teachers. But that's because Washington has made this their goal. So, I mean, you just can't squeeze blood out of a turtle.
My, my only, I want to give as much money as I can to teachers and make it sustainable. I don't want five years down the line for not to be able, not to be sustainable and I said to Cut Stat, that, I want it to be sustainable moving forward. That's my goal. That's Jason's goal. Whether I'm right or wrong about that, that's how I approach it.
You can't hurt the children. They have to be first.
About there. Two fifty.
Yeah.
If you gave it up, how much would that be? I'll talk to your parents.
Two fifty? Oh, to a teacher, two thousand dollars. At least two thousand. It costs us about a hundred and twenty five to do the, it costs us a hundred and twenty three thousand and some change to do the thousand dollar stipend fall.
About the non-certified.
So how do you get money to them? So you got to figure that out, because they're our employees. So.
And if they work extra, they can pay.
Yeah, they work extra, they can pay.
Do, yes, they have, they have done.
I get what you're saying. But I forgot a way to do something there.
If an hourly employee stays an extra hour.
That's what they're, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, they get overtime.
I know, because there was a lot of discussion.
If they're over forty hours.
When we did get that, that, why didn't the non-certified? But the non-certified aren't teaching the virtual, they're not grading papers at home, they're not coming in on the weekends and making lesson plans. They go home.
If they, if they work over forty hours, they get time and a half. If they're a thirty eight hour employee and they work forty, they just get two hours extra pay. They don't get time.
But they're getting paid for working. And that's what I'm saying, is we're working on the weekends, we're not getting paid for that.
It's really hard to do anything because this all may change within a week.
I'm not asking you to do anything. I don't want you to do anything right now.
We want to do something. Or I want to do something. How's that? But it's really hard because we don't know. And we know there's going to be a lot out there, but we don't know how much we can do.
I've got a lot of missing parts.
So we'll have a better idea with S R three. I'll have that information by S R three. I will talk to this out here in one. You're fiscal, you're going to end it.
But there's an election. Some boards get more money and some get less, so. Notice that.
It's true.
We're supposed to have a special meeting next week.
Yes.
Do they? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Do tonight?
Yeah, we have some answers by then.
Can you nail us a figure down on what we can do and we can't do? Was this two fifty right here? By then?
What kind of direction? I need some direction. Based on what we did in fall?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I can tell you that, based on the contract they signed in the fall. Can you give me that answer?
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
I can give you an answer on that case, but not long-term case. Drive and show drive.
Next item. Samantha.
First off, I'd like to thank the board.
Samantha, come closer. You can do it, come on.
For everybody that don't know, Samantha has asked to address the board. She's got, I think, believe you have a statement you're going to read. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Go for it.
You may know me for the Ava R one transportation page. I voiced my opinion on how things have been going throughout the past few years. I've learned a number of things, some things I wish I never knew, like how corruption and greed has taken over our school district. Some of the board members ought to be ashamed of themselves. Dr. Dial, you promised everyone things would get better. We, the community, trusted you. The lies and the deception needs to stop. I've listened to the people who are running for school board swear they're going to bring unity to our school district. But the people they are associated with and supported by are the ones who keep the division going in our community. I have read the employee retention survey and it saddens me. People want to unify the school. That's why I'm here. The truth needs to come out so the community can start healing. So I come to you with the transport report. Transpar was supposed to be an independent audit. When the audit came out, everyone received four different versions. No one could figure out how or why. I can answer that question. Per sunshine request, I ask for any and all communications between the Ava R one district, Transpar, and the transportation. I received emails, but no text messages or phone calls. According to the custodian of records, that was Dr. Dial's personal phone. According to records, any and all communication was supposed to be transparent between the bus route owners, Transpar, and the school district officials. To my surprise, Transpar, the independent audit, was not so independent. Not just influenced by our superintendent, according to records I've obtained from the school district, Dr. Dial directed Transpar and informed Transpar what he wanted them to put in the audit. Here are some of the emails. May twenty first, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty four P M. From Gio to Jason Dial. Yes, I will make those amendments and send out an updated version. May twenty first, two thousand nineteen, at eight fifty five P M. Thank you. I understand how hard it is to make comparisons without all the information from the contractors, but we are spending five point two percent of our budget on transportation, which is in range. Given the nine point two five percent increase is going to throw me above range when comparing to teacher salary that are in the middle. Jason Dial. The audit was not supposed to compare teacher salaries to bus drivers. That audit was to show if the drivers were underpaid or overpaid. Rumors and speculation spread to the public by the school district themselves by letting loose what each driver received per route in order to turn the community against the route owners. May twenty second, two thousand nineteen, Gio to Jason Dial and Jan Turner. All, I added a few details and have amended the documents. Gio. June twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen, Jason Dial to Gio Vani. I would like to make some very clear language about how this mistake was made. A very clear recommendation, not that it matters at this point. I and five members of my board have defended this report for the last thirty days, and now we look like idiots. I am very disappointed that this is the quality of work that five thousand dollars gives a client. I would assume I will get to see the response to these questions prior to the release to everyone. Jason Dial. June twenty sixth, two thousand nineteen, at one oh six P M. To Jason from Gio. Jason, attached is a report that includes the addendum, which, with the explanation of error and to update the summary. If you have any further questions, please reach out. Gio. Later on that day, Dr. Dial emailed Gio Vani. The report I have received does not reflect the conversation we had yesterday on the phone with you and your associates. And again, that day, at eight thirty nine P M, Gio, Tim, here are my suggestions to be sure that we are very clear with the association and the district moving forward. And the email continued Dial giving more suggestions. June twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, at one thirty one P M. To Gio from Jason Dial. I am fine with the wording, but shouldn't that be included in the appendix next to the rates instead of in front? Jason. June twenty seventh, at two twenty, or two fifty two P M. From Gio to Jason Dial and Jan. All, it was brought to our attention that there was a calculation error on the recommendation within the technical summary submitted in May. Attached is the addendum that explains the errors and contains our recommendation and how to move forward, given the approval of the Ava R one school district. Thanks, Gio. June twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen, from Jason Dial to Bart Ellison. After receiving the amended report, the evaluator recommended that the increase approved by the board last week remains of the additional four point six two percent should be based on the following factors. Service quality, success highway patrol inspection, district finances, reopening and negotiating a contract to include standard yearly increases for contractors, paternity clause, and shared overhead cost. Again, I want to thank the board for providing me this opportunity to speak at this meeting.
The next item on the agenda is about the school attorney.
Is that, is that a discussion? With the discussion on?
That's open if you want to discuss.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to point out is, we know Dan also made calls to Transpar, wasn't mentioned in that as well, which would seem to be the same.
They called mine public. When I, when I, when I did my emails, I sent them to Jan and I sent them to Dr. Dial. So they were shared information. They didn't go to one party like all this was.
That was yours about math calculations?
About the math calculations being wrong.
Okay, I just, I just want it to be clearly.
And I sent Dr. Dial that copy also. Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Next item. Dan Johnson. I think he would like to address the board and give us a report.
Okay, this is the last regular board meeting for the reorganization until after the election. Thought it'd be a good time to look back and see where we've been and review some of the possibilities in the future. Some of this, I'm going to talk about the future, has already been covered tonight, so when I get to it, I'll have to throw it out. There's no point going over it again. The first thing we did in the last nine months is, we tried to have our discussions out in the open. Our school board meetings now last about, on average, probably an hour longer than they did previous to the organization. If you discuss everything out in the open, you don't have anything to hide. And like I've said previously in the other meetings, sometimes that looks a little rough, but that's the way we wanted to do it, and I just think it's the best way to do it. Some of the things that we did, the first thing we did, one of them was select the lowest bid for the school auditor, which would make us, the way it was, we were out of compliance with our own written policy for the school because we had taken a higher price on the audit bid. So we reversed it and took the lower price on the audit bid, and it saved the school twenty thousand dollars. Quickly settled the legal contractor, legal conflict between the bus contractors and the school district. We put the security cameras on the school buses to help with safety issues, protect the school and drivers from liability issues. We increased certified substitute teacher pay from seventy five to a hundred and twenty five dollars in an effort to encourage retired teachers to sub in order to promote more learning and lower discipline problems. We gave teachers the opportunity to increase pay from fifty two fifty to a hundred dollars for unused sick days by reducing allowable sick days from fifteen to ten days annually with a total allowable accumulation of a hundred dollars, a hundred days. Teachers will be able to be paid a lump sum payment of up to ten thousand dollars at retirement. Teachers will be paid annually for anything over a hundred days. With the previous policy, sick pay was lost if not used and encouraged absenteeism, requiring the school to hire subs and still pay teachers full pay. We also eliminated a paragraph in school policy that would cause a loss of accumulated sick pay if a teacher left our district before tenured service. We think this policy will eventually be revenue neutral for the school and be an added benefit to the staff. Early in the school year, when we were trying to figure out how to deal with COVID, Dina discovered that we had outdated computers in elementary, K through A. And based on the information provided by the administration, the board approved either a new laptop or desktop computer of the teacher's choice. Nearly ninety new Parthian boards were purchased for classrooms. A thousand dollar stipend is given to certified staff and turkeys give them to staff just before Christmas. We started a school-operated cafeteria program in order to provide better quality food for our students and staff. It appears that the daily lunch participation has increased from about six hundred to about a thousand, and staff are eating more meals in the cafeteria as well. I think we can all agree that academics will improve if our kids are not hungry. Looking forward into the twenty one, twenty two school year, and these are my thoughts, not necessarily the thoughts of the other board members here, some of the issues that I think, and again, I say we've already touched on it tonight, the budget in general is going to be a big issue. We've got to decide how much money we've got to spend, where to spend it, how to spend it, that we get the best bang for the buck. That's going to be a discussion that's ongoing and ongoing. I've got the eight hundred thousand in your air conditioners, which we've already talked about. I think probably about eight hundred thousand is going to be academic recovery, which we've already talked about. On the asbestos removal, we talked about that. But one thing I want to be sure that everybody understands, the last two years, we've spent in excess of forty thousand dollars tearing it up just a little bit at a time. But for clarification, we are not required, and there is no urgency for tile removal. Tile's been there for sixty years and it's still in good shape. We can actually cover it up if we choose to do so. The only reason we actually have to, the only time we would be required to remove it is if we remodel the building or in some way it became damaged. But if COVID's going to pay for it, I don't, I think we can probably all agree, we ought to go ahead and get it out and just get rid of it. And also, I was going to talk about the, our debt. There had been some talk about restructuring the debt, which to me was saying, we're going to borrow another two point three million dollars, and which would be a total of five million, and now we're going to extend the payments out. Payments could still be four hundred thousand dollars a year, but they would have been fifteen years out, so we would be till twenty thirty six paying it off. And I don't support that at all. I want to pay off debt and free up that four hundred thousand dollars in cash flow so we can use it for salaries or whatever we think we need to use it for. Seventy three thousand dollars of the four hundred thousand we pay every year is just interest as of last year. Some of the money, I assume, and we didn't really talk about it much tonight, but we've talked about making the storm shelter over in elementary for some time. But again, we haven't had any real deep discussion about it, which also doubles as classrooms for the preschoolers, or at least get the preschoolers in the building regardless of what class decided, that we decided to put into those, that storm shelter. When I was a little kid, tornado came through and wiped out my next door neighbor's house. I was always, as a child, scared to death of storms. We would, we didn't have cars, so we'd have to walk from our house to the neighbor's to go to store. I know what that feels like. I know what that feels like. We need a storm shelter in the elementary, so these kids don't have to get out of the storm and go to the big shelter. That's going to cost, Dr. Dole said, one point one million, I'm sure it is.
One point one, one point two somewhere.
Yeah. Now, I'm pretty optimistic we can do these things. One thing that you haven't heard anything about lately, but I heard six, eight months ago, when they were starting, starting to talk about an infrastructure program, a federal infrastructure program. And some of the things that were written there were money for school buildings and money for renewable energy. So I think we just need to set tight for a little bit and see what comes out in the infrastructure program. I would assume it's probably a better time. There'll probably be grant money in there for this stuff.
Gets back on the table.
Okay, so I'm pretty optimistic that we can, we can pay off our debt in a couple of years, or maybe a little more, and we can loosen up this money, we can kind of have our cake and eat it too, and we can have the storm shelter and get those kids. The kids in the preschool, to me, are open for intruders. The other thing, I would like to have a little bit of money, and again, we all need to talk about this, is I would like to somehow secure the perimeter around the whole campus. We've got too many people that just walk through and go wherever they want to go. And I don't want to make it prison, but I want to get it to where during school hours, people can't just come and go across the whole campus as they please. Somebody just walk up behind a kid and just walk to school when the door's open. I mean, I guess maybe in the end, we just all need to put our heads together and decide where we want to go and try to work together to get there. And it seems like we're kind of, this is more of the more, one of the more positive meetings, I think, in some ways that we've had in a while.
The infrastructure goes back on the table. I don't know much about it. I just know that.
Yeah. Nobody.
Unless you can do that crystal ball, nobody's seen it.
Everybody good? No discussion?
Thanks.
Next item, school attorney. I was wanting to ask to put this on the agenda. We have talked for some time about trying to keep as much as possible local, and, and we have done that. But we still have an attorney in St. Louis that we use occasionally, not too often anymore, but occasionally, and he cost us quite a bit of money. And I would like a discussion about trying to use somebody more local.
How do we choose that attorney? How do we choose the attorney that currently is the one we're talking about from C E S?
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure how we chose him. I know at one time we did change attorneys. We had, I think, a lady in Springfield was in it, and then we changed, and then, I'm not sure if we voted on, on, make it so too, but we did use him. We started using him right before you came, I think. So. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we voted on him or we just needed him and called him and asked him to help us.
I can answer that. We don't pay him a retainer, so that, usually that, that would require a vote. Pay a retainer. We just pay him hourly for what he does, so I don't know why he was chosen. He is a specific school attorney. And there are four to five firms in the state that are specific school attorneys, and we don't need them very often. There's, there's a firm out, there's an office in Springfield for a couple of those two firms. Out of Ice, King City, St. Louis, Columbia, a couple in Springfield. We only call them when it's specifically school law related, like special education law. You know, they're specialized people. So we have significantly reduced our attorney costs over the last couple of years. Or tenure, you know, the tenure law is very school specific, you know, if there's a teacher issue or something we have to address. Title IX allegation. So other than that, I mean, you know, if we do real estate transactions or something, it's low. We don't use those people to do any of that stuff. And that's why at this month, we didn't, we didn't have a bill. And we use MSBA whenever we can because those attorneys are free.
We have a, there's a local boy that, and he's not local, he's actually in Springfield. But he graduated from Ava, grew up here, and, and it's John Spurlock.
John was one of my kids.
And I, I have heard that he does quite a bit of work for schools, with schools and whatnot. And I would like to see, you know, if, if he does the type of stuff that.
I think go and talk to him. He was at Branson last time I did, but he might have moved.
I thought he was in Springfield. Maybe in Branson.
When he came back here, he went to Branson. I don't, but I'll start finding him to talk to.
Maybe, but I'm, I'm a big fan of local and, and, you know. Like he, I mean, he went to school, he graduated here and everything.
He's a good kid.
I'm, I'm a big fan of that, and I don't really know what we got to do.
Well, let me call him and talk to him, find out what his expertise there is.
Okay, I figured. I can get along with that. Everybody good with that? Call him, talk to him.
I'll do it.
Next item, board policy. Mr. Trevall.
Thank you. So in the last two or three weeks, probably maybe a little bit more than that, so my phone's been ringing off the wall, getting all kinds of communications from people in the community, a lot of the, the employees of the school, asking questions about policy. Asking, is this, can you do this, or can you not do that, you know? So Sunday, I decided I was going to go through, and I've done it before in my first term. I went through all the policies and I thought, well, I'd refresh myself and go through all of them again, so that's exactly what I did. I spent about the whole day reading every policy that we have to address some of the concerns that the people that had been calling me about. So, so that's what I did, and we have some stuff going on in the district that is against the policy. And I'll start with one of them tonight. And on February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, ten oh seven A M., Mr. Thompson, the school board candidate, in the coming April sixth election, sent a mass email to approximately a hundred and thirty-seven, I believe that's probably low on the number, school district employees using the district operated email system. About two hours later, he sent the same email again to many individual teachers using the same district email system, even at the, even after the administration started receiving complaints from the email. The email that was sent listed accusations by Mr. Thompson that were directed toward the Board of Education expressing the discontent Mr. Thompson had with the board. After reading the email, many employees felt uncomfortable with the information they had received and confused at what they should do with such information, as they had never received information like this on the district email system. Also in the email, Mr. Thompson campaigned to the recipients and asked the employees for their vote and listed reasons why they should vote for him. Now, Ava R one district policy K one, K I, states, it is, it is the intent of the district to operate a non-public forum and except as allowed in this policy, advertisement is prohibited on district property. For the purpose of this policy, advertisement includes, but is not limited to, in-person solicitation, signage, verbal announcements, using communication equipment, pamphlets, handouts, distribution through district technology, other distribution of information regarding products or services available for sale, or the solicitation of information, including but not limited to, political campaigning. So in short form, the district is to operate a non-public forum and campaigning is prohibited on district property or with the use of school resources. Okay, Ava R one district policy E H B pertaining to technology use of states. The Ava R one school district's technology exists for the purpose of enhancing the educational opportunities and achievements of district students. It further states that the purpose of the policy is to facilitate access to district technology and to create a safe environment in which to use the technology. And then under the definitions in this policy, technology resources include technologies, devices, services used to access, process, store, or communicate information. This definition includes, but is not limited to, computers, modems, printers, scanners, fax machines, and transmissions, telephonic equipment, mobile phones, audio visual equipment, internet, and electronic mail, parentheses, email, electronic commu-, electronic communications, devices and services, including wireless access media, multimedia resources, hardware and software. Under the closed forum section in the same policy, it states, the district technology resources are not a public forum for expression of any kind and are to be considered a closed forum to the extent allowed by the law. The district's web, the district's webpage will be, will provide information about the school district, but will not use an open forum. And then furthermore, employees may be disciplined or terminated and students suspended or expelled for violating the district's technology policies and procedures. Any attempted violation of the district technology policies or procedures, regardless of success or failure of the attempt, may result in the same discipline or suspension of privileges as that of an actual violation. The district will cooperate with the law enforcement in investigating any unlawful use of district technology resources. Okay, here's another policy, Ava R one district policy D C B, political campaign states, no contribution or expenditure of district funds shall be made directly by any board member, employee, or agent of the district to advocate, support, or oppose any ballot measure or candidate for public office. Missouri statute one one five point six four six prohibits any contribution or expenditure of public funds to support or oppose any candidate for public office. Now, this is widely interpreted by legal experts to mean public employees shouldn't use any employer-provided resource in their political advocacy. And also interpreted as technology, technically, it is illegal for a taxpayer-funded entity resource, resources to be used for any campaign. The mass email sent by Mr. Thompson violated many Ava R one district policies and possible state statutes which need to be determined by the Missouri Ethics Commission or persons with that authority. But even more recklessly, it put the district employees at a very high risk with the possibility of endangering their careers. Just a simple discussion of the email content in the halls of the school building or an accidental or innocent sharing of the content through the email system or a district-owned device could have been detrimental to the district employee due to the policy that has been placed for many years. After receiving complaints and comments of confusion from employees of possible violation and the unprofessional approach and rudeness of the email, the superintendent did send a follow-up response by email to district employees mentioning the email they had received by a potential candidate and warning about employees campaigning. But I would have preferred more urgency on that matter and more direct communication on the seriousness, seriousness of that, of the situation with better instruction of what employees should do with the material. Ava R one policy B B A, under school board powers and duties, states, it is the purpose of the role, purpose and role of the Board of Education to exercise general supervision over the schools of the district. Ava R one policy C B, school superintendent, states, the superintendent shall be responsible to the board for execution of the policies and regulations. Because of the superintendent's gross negligence to act on such serious matters, even while being questioned by board members and school employees, I feel it is my duty to expose these violations to prevent future problems with the district. I also feel it's necessary to take proper actions. I will make a motion for the president of the board or his designees or attorney to draft and send a formal letter to Mr. Thompson stating that there were Ava R one board policy violations regarding the multiple emails he sent to the one hundred and thirty-seven or more school employees using the district email system. Furthermore, the board, the president of the board or president's designee will file a complaint to the Missouri Ethics Commission to determine if any state statute violations may have occurred in this incident.
You made a motion there?
Yep.
We have a motion on the floor to. You're going to live on that?
You have two motions. You have two actions.
I have two actions and one motion. He, he was, I guess, sorry.
We have a motion for the president or his designee to, or attorney to draft and send a formal letter to Mr. Thompson stating that there were board policy violations and for the board president or his designee to file a complaint with Missouri Ethics Commission. I need a second. Anybody want a second? Dan seconds. Any discussion?
The policy sounded to me that it was for school employees, correct?
Say that again, please.
School employees, is that correct?
It's for both.
For also the public?
Yeah, the Missouri statute that I read, that was anybody. Our policy, which I read all of it, I can send that down to you if you want to read it?
No, I mean, I would appreciate it if we put this in the packet so we could have read it, you know, ahead of time, you know, which policy we were going to talk about. Because that's what seems to normally happen. You know, it was a very broad topic of board policy, which you can see how thick that is and then. Well, my point is, is then to do this in open session and then for us to be able to research this, that would have been nice as far as the policies go. So I think the way we normally do things is we put things in the, in the board packet so that we can all research them ahead of time and we can make a informed decision on this. But, I mean, that's, that's how I feel. I feel like I should probably abstain from this vote to vote for or against, not to vote for or against, just so I could read through this ahead of time, not just right here in the open session.
Has anybody else reviewed these policies other than you prior to tonight?
There is legal opinion on.
So I respect your opinion of this, but I would rather have more time to, to look at this because this was just put on the agenda as board policies. I, I asked the whole yesterday if we, if there was a specific policy that I need to look at. You just said you want to talk about board policy. So that I could look into this further, so I, I just feel like we should probably.
I, I'll continue on this. I continue to pull up my Gmail about once every two hours just to see if there's more information on some of this stuff. When we put stuff on the agenda, most generally, it is very detailed, it's minorly detailed, but some things are. It's minorly detailed, but some things are left pretty vague. And I will have to abstain as well on that. The same with, you know, this information that I wanna take home and read and educate myself on that this they've spoken about.
That just seems like the better way to do it. And so we all have opportunities to look into this and be able to form our opinion rather than to just do this in open session and some of us don't.
You can, you can vote now, Mark.
I feel like I should abstain just so I can.
You can do that too.
Make informed decisions on this. So that's what I plan to do.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Four votes for, two votes to abstain. Well, we're at the last item finally. CTA. Ava Community Teachers Association. I have been asked to put this on the agenda. I have asked a few questions about it and so far I'm, I'm not got any answers as to who, who runs it, who, if they have any officers. I don't, I don't have it. I haven't got any question answered whatsoever. Mark called me yesterday and we talked a little about this and he said he might be able to get some answers.
I don't, I'm not gonna tell you that I'm all knowledgeable on this, but it was the Community Teachers Association and it was offered to leave everybody. Also you had a little piece of paper and you could check it off. Before it was write a check, then it became take it out of your funds. And it was, all the money went in the end of the year and you, people were invited. Now, I'm gonna, that didn't happen last year. And that's one thing, you know, we all get busy and things happen. Of course, this is what happened in the springtime. But before you could meet, um, we always told everybody, cause I mean, I, I, and honestly, I can only do this in MS, cause I was part of MSTA, so and I, I used to help. Um, but everybody was given the chance to come to that meeting and the money just went to scholarships. It's all the only thing the money went to. It didn't send anybody to any conventions, it didn't. It just, so it was just kind of a, you know, almost all schools have something that pulls the teachers together and supposed to be. And, you know. And that's, and so it's not really, it's not NEA, it's not MSTA, it's not, you know, any particular group. It's supposed to be just association of us teachers.
Are you a member?
Yes. I, no, assuming, cause I'm having, like, I thought about this. I was like, did it come out this fall because our minds were on so much more? I, I really don't and I, but every year since then, I know in the, I've always paid mine. And as I say, it was ten dollars, I didn't know exactly how much it was. And you didn't have to choose, you didn't have to join, it was a, a choice. Nobody makes anybody do anything when it comes to that, so as it should be. So I, 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 I know kinda where this came from, but I just, I don't know that we, any of us had any, there's not an agenda with it necessarily. It's just the, what if we do need to meet? What if we do need to come together and discuss things? Then, you know, we've just joined and I guess ten dollars, we were basically saying, hey, and we'll give to the scholarship, cause it's not used for anything else. So, not a lot of meetings. Cause NEA has, they have theirs, they, they meet. MSTA, you know, we have one, they meet, you know, we meet. So it's separate, it really is.
Some of the questions I, I've asked, and from what I understand, it is just a local thing for Ava teachers, right? But I understand there's several schools that have similar.
Yeah, it's, I think it's pretty common. Well.
Yeah, I talked to a couple other.
So, yeah, I mean, it's just a, if we need, and I mean, this is fortunate because apparently we haven't felt like a huge need to come together a lot where this would be a lot pressure on our minds here. But, and that's good, but I don't think there's any, there's not anything like, oh, we're going this way or that way or this. It's just an opportunity if we need to, to come together. And as I said, what better than to give the money to a senior?
So, so do you guys like vote on actions that you take such as most recently wanting to rent the gym for a candidate forum?
No, I'll be honest, I have to step back. I just happen to know the information and I know the people, the one that you probably wanna talk to, she is laid out flat on the bed and she can't move. As I, as I say, I'm not gonna tell you the last two years that, that we've done a lot with it, cause we have it. Now, previously we did a little bit more and, you know, we'd always give a chance to, you know, if we wanna come together and meet. Most of the time, nobody wants to meet. And that's because there's nothing that, that's about, you know, that that, that part in our minds is so important that we gotta get together. We've got a net worth, wait.
So, so you don't know anything about that?
I do not know on that part, but I mean, to me as a teacher, and I mean, that's our community association, it's best for all of us, and I mean, community, teachers, everybody to hear, to hear these opinions, then I mean, I, I feel it should be a hundred percent fair for each and every person, nobody, you know, it, it should be done fairly for everybody. And it's a good chance for the community to hear what's.
Well, I don't have a problem with the community hearing it, but I have a problem with using school resources for it, which is against our policy. That's, that's the problem. Is there?
Can I just address that? So I was asked if they could have a board forum, and they had a board forums. They used to have board forums here as well. They're not campaigning for one person or the other, it's just asking questions and everybody answers the same question. And it's usually no campaigning, they're gonna hold one by one person or the other. They're just, are answering questions of the teachers. So we're not spending district resources to campaign for one person or the other.
The candidates are there to basically give their campaign, their pitch.
To answer the questions asked by the teachers.
Have you read the policies?
I have read the policies.
You got any opinion on that?
I do not believe there's district dollars being spent to campaign for money.
No, but the school resources being used.
It does not have dollars.
That's the problem.
Yes, I'm sorry, but if it's.
Or even property. Property or property or building need them.
I can ask him to drive them, if that's what you like. We use the gym, cause I had plenty of space to be spread out. And every, they used the boardroom at my previous district. They did it in the room like this. The Community, the Teacher Association.
I, I know a few years ago, and I don't know if it was the Community Teachers Association, but the teachers, it gets it. That was in that, and they were told they couldn't leave the school, they had to go to the MOOC Center. And I don't, I don't know if anybody remembers that or not, but it was, it was actually before my time, but I would say eight years ago or something like that. That's, that's the question I get asked the most is.
I can talk to Karen and see if they can move.
Yeah, when you, when you look at policy, it's, it isn't just, it's for whether you oppose or, or not oppose, it's, it's a neutral thing. The, the, anything to do with the campaigning, election process or the, I can, I can read the stuff, I've got, I've got a ton of stuff.
I've read it. So when a district's passing a bond issue, they provide information. They don't ask to vote yes or no. They provide information to the dis, to, to the patrons of the district on, if this passed, this is what would happen.
Yeah, there's separate wording for that in the policy. That's, that's a whole different thing.
I can talk to Tim and see if the MOOC's available and talk to Karen. I'm gonna get word out this month.
And the using of the school resources to get that information out in the logs.
Question it.
From, from elementary.
I, that's not their fault. I asked if they could mail those six candidates. That if, they could use six envelopes and I felt like it's not, in my opinion, I'll reimburse the district the two dollars and fifty cents for the six envelopes. I told them that good, that's not on them, it's on me.
It's not the money?
Yeah, no, but, but don't blame them for that.
Well.
That's, that's on me.
You feel that that's okay?
I didn't feel like they're, I don't feel like they're campaigning. I feel like they are trying to get information out to teachers. They are inviting people to a fair or to answer questions.
And that's fine, as long as it's off of the school, property or resources. That's, I'm not trying to stop any campaign forum, but we do have policy that says you can't do that.
Okay.
You cannot do that. And I, you can read this if you want.
You want to just hear it? Okay. I will talk to him tomorrow.
Does anybody need to hear the policies regarding that?
There's a question. Why is this not an issue with other school districts?
It actually, it doesn't happen very often. Just like that letter, they're, they kinda go hand in hand.
I get the.
You just, you just never, it never happens. You, it, it, I mean.
Yeah, there's nothing, Dr. Adam, other schools don't do, do this like with candidates? I don't know, I haven't, I'm.
My, my past experience is that CTA's do have board forums.
Have what?
They do have board forums.
On school property?
They actually use the boardroom at one district I was at.
Just one or all?
Well, in, in dependence, they use the bigger theater, cause it was a bigger district.
Is their policy what starts?
They follow up the same, it's the same policy. Just my opinion. Even if we didn't have policy, even if it wasn't against the law, we shouldn't be bringing this into school. It's just not, it's just not good. When that email came out, there were a lot of unhappy people. Everybody doesn't share the same viewpoint. Everybody doesn't think it's okay. And the people think it's okay, that's your point of view, there's other people who say it's not okay. Just take it outside of school. I will talk to them tomorrow.
You know, this, this school is funded by taxpayers. Elections around here are heated topics. You're gonna have some taxpayer offended by something if you have it. You know, it's just, it's just way better to have it somewhere else in town, not, not on, not on taxpayer property. And I, and I do fully believe that I've got the policies here that state that.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. CTA. Who, I'm a member, but who, why are, I didn't know anything about it. And I just wondered why there's only one person speaking for the association?
I agree, I have the same question. And my emails. No one seemed to know anything about this.
Well, some teachers don't even know what CTA is.
Exactly.
And they've never had an opportunity to join it. So I thought it was just an elementary thing. But my email came from Wendy and Karen. And I don't know who gave them permission to represent us.
Which I was just asked to do the survey, which is fine. And I, I didn't know anything beforehand either. I do, I strongly believe that we should hear everybody's opinion. Even if I'm not exactly lined up with them, I need to hear it, so maybe I change my mind.
Well, CTA didn't ask.
But I was just asked to do, I just asked to make the survey and now since I'm sitting at house, I did. And honestly, as I said, I have not been involved as much, you know. I kinda, bad habit back from when my husband passed away, I kinda stepped back. But I am a little bit stronger on that. I know that we've had them before for MSTA and we did do it privately in the church um, when we had them. That was a choice if you wanted to come or not. But as far as this, we haven't had a meeting and I agree.
So are our dues?
Having a meeting beforehand, I think this was a last, last moment thought.
I guess what I wanna make sure is our ten dollar dues isn't being used to pay to fund this, rent it, use any of our.
No, because I, I did the words.
Scholarships is what I thought.
And that's as far as I know, that's the only place.
Who's moderating? Who's moderating the debate or the open forum?
Yeah, Alphorn.
Karen?
Alphorn.
And out of our association, who nominated her?
You know, I think she just felt like we needed to, I think some of them had talked.
I bet she did.
Well, I mean, we're all like that, we all have our directions.
No, we're not all like that.
Well, you have yours too.
So you didn't know anything about it?
No.
No.
I just, personally in my heart, everybody needs to see this and it's good when somebody steps up and does it.
I think our only problem is the way the, the letter was signed, Community Teacher Association, that was a representation of all the members when it was decided, two members decided to send this out representing the entire membership.
And I don't know if we discussed it, cause I've been gone, I'm broken, but.
But if somebody actually.
Well, I, I asked a couple of questions, but, but why wasn't all the members asked? If they were to do the survey, if we, if they felt or if they were causing something like that.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
This, this, this is not an issue for the board, this is an issue for the teachers.
Yeah, CTA, it sounds like it's their issue that.
Yes.
I do have a question. All I wanted to know was, he had made a statement that the gentleman doesn't work for the school. How did he get the emails and stuff through the school system to be able to send out all that? Who did that?
They're on the website.
Okay. That's why I wanted to.
It's all directory information that we have to worry about that is.
So he just went in there and then sent them?
I don't know how it was done.
I, I just.
It's public information.
Okay.
You, you can go on and.
I think that's it. Need a motion to adjourn or go back into quarters? Danny makes the motion? You have a second. Dan seconds. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.